First of all, thank you all for coming. We really appreciate getting your input. I try to hold board meetings. Well, I did, was holding board meetings in each ward every year. Then COVID came along, kind of interrupted things. We did some virtual meetings. So now the things are relatively back to normal. We are doing these in every ward again. Now, we have with us June Kieran. Everybody knows June, our ward seven alderman.
Hi, ma'am.
Kathryn Sofakitis, who is a state rep. Rick Dowd, who is a ward two alderman. I'm trying to think. Tim Sonat is on the downtown improvement committee.
Yeah, also your ward moderator.
I'm ward moderator. He, he, he lives obviously in this neighborhood. And Paul Patty is on the city rail commission. There have been some things happening with rail service. So I usually just tell you a little bit about what's going on in the city and then take questions, comments, whatever you, whatever you want to talk about. But I figured that one thing that'll be on at least some people's minds is this asphalt plant, which is proposed for Temple Street. Now, Matt Sullivan is the community development director. He, that oversees planning and works with the planning board. The city, our administration, is definitely opposed to the asphalt plant. But there is a debate in the planning to board. The planning board will, under state law and city ordinances, makes a decision in this kind of situation. We say that the asphalt plant is not, does not conform with the zoning law, the so-called land use code, for various reasons. There is an underlying industrial zone, which has been there for decades and decades. But on top of that, there is what we call an overlay zone, because the idea was to try to transition this industrial neighborhood into a more residential neighborhood. This is happening in Nashua and many other places in New Hampshire and around the country. And we say that the requirements of the overlay zone, and I'm sort of looking at, this is, these are the relevant provisions, especially the ones that I've outlined in yellow, they do not meet these, we say. And one, there are a number of factors that they need to show, which we don't think they can show. And we can give you the site, or you know, you can look at the city ordinances yourself online. One of the things, just one of them, I mean, we've got health concerns, environmental concerns, traffic concerns. But one thing that does need to be shown is that this would not adversely affect surrounding property values. And there are property owners nearby who are looking at this very carefully. One in particular has hired a very skillful lawyer to make the case that their property is being definitely adversely affected or would be by this asphalt plant. But we haven't yet had a chance, they're, they're coming forward with a report, but we haven't yet had a chance to review it. Now, the applicant who's seeking to build a thing, you know, is marshaling their evidence too, and they'll be submitting a lot of things. But we are at least cautiously optimistic about the result. And the next hearing, or the, the next time this may be considered, at least initially, maybe not a final decision probably, but initially by the planning board is March 14th, right?
March 23rd.
March 23rd, which is a Thursday night at the third floor of City Hall. That's where the planning board meets. There are other things, of course, going, going on in the city. Last night, the board of aldermen, and we can talk about the asphalt plant more if you'd like, but I'll just throw out a few other things. Last night, the board of aldermen passed or authorized the city to engage, to embark with 17 other communities, 16 other communities, cities, towns, and one county on what's called community power. This is something that we have been working on for a couple of years, something authorized by the legislature. And it enables communities, either together or by themselves, to assume the duty of buying electricity for ever-source customers. In order, the objective is to help save consumers money. Now, we know that electric rates have gone up to 22 cents a kilowatt. That's for the electric power portion of the bill. If you look at the bill, you'll see that it has many components to it. One of those components is the cost of electric power, and that's what's gone up so much recently. Under this system, ever-source would continue to bill you, continue to charge the same rates as they have for the delivery of the service, which is part of the charges, and everything else that they get paid for. So the only thing that would be different is a different, you know, a different entity would be buying the actual power. Now, this group of 17 cities and towns, we've engaged a send, which is a energy purchasing firm. They do, they do this across the country for other communities. And there is a kind of a bank operation as well. But were we to enter, if we were able to enter right now, we could save significant amount of money. But the initial launch may be delayed for various reasons. There's some things going on in Concord. But one thing that I want to stress is that you will retain full choice, in the sense that yes, ever-source customers would be automatically switched over to Nashua Community Power. But if you didn't have confidence in that, or for any reason you wanted to stay with ever-source, you can always switch back to ever-source. And you can go back and forth. Probably you need, you know, probably at the end of the month where you, where you want to make the change. So not that second, but you can change with relative ease.
It's a supply charge, right? We, we pay for the power.
Yeah.
But the supply charge, you might have to switch.
Yes. So it's 22 cents a kilowatt right now. If we, if we could save, if we could save two and a half cents a kilowatt, that would be about $100 a year for an average residential customer. It's possible the savings would be more. But at a minimum, what this is doing is forcing ever-source to be more creative in terms of their power purchases. So because now suddenly there's actual significant competition. So in this group of 17 communities, there is Nashua, who's a big user, Dover, Hanover, Lebanon, Cheshire County, but four Keene, other towns and cities. So, you know, this is a fairly big group of, of communities, and it is for, it actually, ever-source is, you know, looking at new things so they could try to be more, be more creative and reduce their power rates too. So in the end, we may have that positive effect on the, on the electricity costs for everyone, including the ever-source. Including ever-source customers outside of our city. I did want to mention the revaluation, because I know that has worked a hardship on a lot of people. This was a state mandated, state ordered, state supervised revaluation. If we had had the choice, we would not have gone and done this now. The problem, when what a revaluation does, what, what it does not do is raise more money. It does not collect, even though, you know, values for some properties went up, and I'll get into that, it does not raise more money. What it does is it real allocates the tax burden as between taxpayers. For example, if you have two taxpayers, they're each paying, you know, they're each, I'm just going to make the, you know, each one is a million dollars, and each of them is paying $20,000 in taxes. If, as a result of the revaluation, one goes up to a million two, and the other goes down to 800,000, you still got the same value, they still pay $20,000 in taxes, but now one pays 12 and one pays eight. Because the tax burden is allocated based, under state law, based on fair market value. So what happened is that the residential properties went up 41% on average. But the commercial properties did not do anywhere near that. In fact, the city's biggest taxpayer, the Pheasant Lane Mall, according to the fair market value analysis, this was not, this is done by an expert firm, not by city, you know, employees, fell by $20 million. And they are contesting that, and there'll be a lawsuit, because they say they fell by $50 million. They fell, not went up, fell by $50 million, from 100 and roughly 150 million down to 100 million. So what happened is that before the revaluation, homes paid about 65% of all of the taxes, because they were about 65% of the total value of the city, assessed value. After the revaluation, because the residences, the houses went up so much, and the commercial did not, now houses represent much closer to 70%, closer to 70% of the total. So now houses, homes, homeowners pay closer to 70% of the total rather than 65. And industrial properties pay instead of 30, as a combined total, 30, instead of 35%, closer to 30. Again, this is not something we were looking for. We didn't want to do this, but we were under state order to do this this year in the manner that it was done.
Is there going to be a way for the elderly tax exemption to be increased?
So the elderly tax exemption has been increased. So the level of income has been, to qualify, has been increased from $50,000 to $54,000. And the amount of the exemption has been increased, being increased in two steps, but will, is moving up to exempt more property. I think the, for a 65-year-old person who qualifies, I think it's going up to, I'd have to look at the exact figures, but it is, the amount of the exemption is going up in two steps. One, the first one this year, and then more next year.
But weren't we already several years behind on our revaluation?
Excuse me, ma'am?
Are we already in arrears?
Well.
Ma'am, if you're going to take questions before the period, can you please repeat them, because I have the microphone.
The question is, weren't we in arrears? Well, state law says you've got to do it every five years. And, you know, it costs money to try to do it every year. So we were not delinquent, we were not behind, but when we, you know, but they wouldn't allow us to delay.
So it wasn't five years, it wasn't six, seven years?
It was four years. But we were, but we were told that based upon, you know, various things that happened at the state level, but we were told we had to do it at four years. There was a court order, basically, and, you know, we had to comply. Again, this was not the best time to do this, because residential properties went up so much, and we, we knew that. But that's, now, we're continuing to watch this very carefully, and if residential values go down and commercial values do not, if we could see that another revaluation would help homeowners, and there would have to be some significant changes for that to occur, but if we saw that, we would undertake to do another revaluation.
What about other exemptions?
All right, so what we do, we have this microphone, so your questions can be captured.
You mentioned that the elderly exemption is being changed.
Yes.
What about the disability for veterans, the 100% disability? We're only at 2,000, and the state allows a $4,000 exemption?
Now, in terms of at least the veterans exemption, and I think the elderly exemption, there are proposals to increase those things, which are before the board of aldermen. They've been held in order to evaluate the effect they would have on other taxpayers. So keep in mind, but my guess is that some action will ultimately be taken. But keep in mind that when an exemption is, is increased for anyone, it means somebody else pays more, it means everybody else pays more. So the ordinance, these, these, these proposals are pending before the personnel committee, and, you know, they're considering what to do with them. But before I go on further, Cindy Rosenwald, I think you just came in or something? I didn't see you at the beginning. What? We introduced people at the beginning. Cindy is our state senator, very knowledgeable on all the state issues. So if you have questions there, we could.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, also representative jurist.
Oh, Lou Juris showed up as well. Thank you, Lou. He's a ward seven rep also. All right, anything, any other, any questions on any of this, what we discussed, or anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Kathleen. I do have concerns about the homeless situation, particularly in Mine Falls.
Yes.
How's that being addressed?
Well, it is a difficult problem. You know, we, in Mine Falls, for example, I think on the 16th of, where are we, January? We went in and, you know, Public Works went in and did, you know, cleaned up things, you know, the garbage and stuff. But, and some of the people moved, but of course, now there's, you know, that needs to be done again. And that is, I think that was a, you know, that's not a cheap undertaking. So we are trying to do a few things. I mean, you see what's going on in Manchester. I mean, it's just far, far more homeless people than here. We did a point in time count a couple of weeks ago, meaning people go out, volunteers, and they try to determine how many homeless people are actually living outside. And the number was about 35. So what are we doing? First of all, we were in full support and helped financially the Spring Street Shelter being opened by the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter. Now, this will increase the capacity that they have from about 45, and what they have now is really junk. I mean, in terms of the Ash Street, the Ash Street Shelter is the main one they have. There's one on Kinseyly Street. It's really in terrible shape. This project, and they raised $9 million for this, will double the capacity that they, you know, their capacity to, I think 92 is the number, and will include dormitories for single men and women, will include some very flexible space for families, and on the top floor has little units for longer-term homeless. We have a task forces sort of working on this all the time, or they met today. You know, it includes Public Works and police and fire. You know, we're trying to work to persuade people to use the shelters and to find places for them to live. I mean, we don't really have the option, you know. I mean, that, so I think our options are to try to find, you know, mental health issues, try to identify those people, and try to get them to seek treatment, and hopefully move them into a more productive situation. Number two, try, you know, try to identify those people who would like to go into a shelter. But there are those people out there who do not, they just refuse. I mean, they, you know, they don't want a shelter. We had, there was a young couple that, I don't know, they have some possessions, and, you know, one of those is a small generator or something. And our group, our, our public health people and others tried to get, this is on that cold, really, really cold night, which was what, two weeks ago, or I think a week ago Friday or something, a week ago Saturday, and tried to get them to move to a shelter. And they said no, you know, because they were afraid someone would steal the tent, steal their possessions, steal the generator. So they stayed there, and they, you know, they survived, and, you know, but, you know, they didn't want to. So we're working on it, we realize it's a problem. We don't want anyone living outside and, or in Greeley Park. So we're trying to address it with Public Works, police, fire, and, you know, any way that we can. And Lori Wilshire, the president of board of aldermen, thank you, Lori.
So can you say?
Yes.
Hi. I just wanted to bring up something. I'm just wondering if the city or any of its constituents or agencies are thinking about any outside-of-the-box solutions? Because as you mentioned, we, we may have a smaller number of homeless, but I feel like any number of human beings that are living outside is too many. And some of the situations where we're talking about getting them into an apartment, some of these people are elderly and disabled, and they're on social security, and they will never make enough money to have an apartment, never. So, and then a lot of other people that have, sorry, that have any mental issues or even physical issues, some of those people, they, they won't go into a shelter situation, because you're very close by your partner, and they have high, high anxiety.
Yeah.
And they cannot physically be in that same room. So, I mean, with all the good intentions that we have, we only have one kind of help, and we have several different kinds of human beings. So it's hard to just have one solution for a problem that may not only have a single-stem problem.
So, and I think, yes, I agree with you. The, and this isn't, you know, the only answer, but the homeless shelter that the Soup Kitchen is putting up is not a one, is not a one-size-fits-all approach. In the sense that, yes, there is a dormitory, but there is flexible, flexible family space, meaning the walls can be moved, so if it's fourth, and the doors can be adjusted.
No, I am familiar. I actually.
And upstairs, there's long-term care. It's single units, I think about a dozen, for people who are judged to really just be incapable of, you know.
Yes, correct. They have, yeah.
They've got the kind of problems you've identified, and they may have to longer-term live in a single unit. Now, so they, so for the first time, once that's done, it's not quite done, but, you know, you'll have at least a dozen places for people in very good, very good conditions to live in a situation where, were they to have an anxiety disorder, it would, you know, be okay for them. Yes, Peter.
Mayor, I think you know what I'm going to ask, right?
Well, I, it's one, it's one of two or three questions.
Right, I know. So, you know, the trail from the City Hall down to Henry Hanger, an update on that, and an update on the potential traffic something up by the bridge.
The second thing was.
Down by the bridge over to Hudson.
So the two questions, the, we were just joking, because I often see Peter, but the first question was the rail trail. So right now, we have, you see that we have a rail trail from City Hall to the west. We also own the corridor, the rail trail corridor from City Hall to the east to the Henry Hanger building. We received a grant, there's a local match requirement, we received a grant to build that out, and it is in design right now. But there has been a little bit of difficulty, because as they were doing the final design, the surveys and all this, they found that there are, in one place, and Matt can, maybe Matt can give the details, but in one place, there, there's some right-of-way issue, so there might have to be negotiation or land, a small amount of land taking.
Behind Wendy's.
Is it behind Wendy's? Matt?
Yeah, I'd be happy to comment. So there, there are actually, there are actually several locations, Peter, along the corridor. When we reviewed the conceptual and final design plans, we realized that the trail could not be constructed in the manner that it was initially conceived, based on the right-of-way that was available in some of those areas. And so some of the street crossings particularly, and behind some of the businesses and homes, the right-of-way is so tight that the topography does not work for actually designing the trail to be accessible, and the way that it was conceived when the project was initially started. So right now, we're actually in the process of finding the full scope of those right-of-way issues, and we're going to work to actually contact property owners and try to secure additional right-of-way, so that the trail can be built in the way that it was initially conceived.
And of course, the rail trail, which we're looking forward to very much, is another reason why we think the asphalt plant is not a good thing, you know, or is a bad thing, because this goes right next to that property where the asphalt plant would be built. The second question has to do with a proposed project on our side of the Hudson Bridge, where of course, traffic is difficult. Now, the state came up, and over a period of time, a, and a lot of input was taken, a solution or, you know, an improvement was designed, which would not really completely solve the traffic congestion, but would have improved it. But as they got near the beginning of construction, they found, guess what?
Asbestos.
Asbestos. Asbestos. Under, asbestos, under the ground. So this probably adds millions to the cost of the project, which was at about $4 million, undetermined how many, you know, how much more money it would be, but a lot more. So it's kind of on a, on hold, really. You know, the state, you know, the city doesn't want to have to pay for the whole project. We agreed to come up with a little bit of money, but I, the state may decide that they don't want to do it because of the additional cost. And this is state DOT, Department of Transportation.
I could comment on that just quickly.
Yes.
You know, obviously, obviously, there was a factory down there that was making asbestos, and they were always giving it away. So there are holes everywhere, in this whole neighborhood, there's asbestos everywhere, you don't know where it is.
Correct.
The fortunate thing about asbestos is if you keep it underground, it's okay. It's only when it gets up into the air, so you can like basically cover it or whatever. Unfortunately, all that property in the front that goes to the bridge, that was, much of that property was part of the main manufacturing company, which made iceboxes. And they gave that, gave that or sold it to the city, and the city filled it all in, so we don't know what somebody filled it in with at this point.
So at this point, Mansville built or manufactured asbestos right there on Bridge Street, and they, you know, people used it as fill all over, because it was thought to be safe in those days. So, you know, they just use it as fill. It's every, it's in a lot of places. It's okay if it's buried, but if you do a construction project, it gets excavated and therefore airborne, and probably, you know, it needs to be relocated or removed, and that's a very expensive proposition. So that is what added to the cost. Yes, sir.
Now, you talked about this digging up everything else, the tannery.
Yes.
That's going to be, I mean, I see that the city owns eight acres of that property, and then there's a gentleman who own, who lives in, it's in a trust, who lives in Florida, that owns majority of it. I was looking at the numbers today, and I mean, we were put on a national priority list back in 2000, and nothing's been approved. So I mean, I don't see how they can talk about designs and everything else we're building until, you know, you have to dig that up, then it has to be new soil put in, then it has to wait approximately 10 years before you guys can do anything. And if they want to construct something, that's, you know, who's going to cover that cost?
All right, so that does not, I mean, that, that's not the way, let me tell you how the EPA sees it and their role. So first of all, I don't, the city does not own any of the land yet. There's about 50 acres, right? 50 acres? 50 acres. If this, if this plan goes forward, the city would get 10 acres for a, you know, open space. But the basic approach, what happened is the EPA came to the city several years ago. This has been a long time through negotiations, with a private developer. And they said the following, and this was during the Trump administration, they said that the EPA director wants public-private partnerships. So we, the EPA, are willing to contribute $6 million to this cleanup if there's a private developer who will also contribute money and will develop the product, the property. They said, they also said that although this. They said, they also said that although this could qualify as a superfund site, you should not put it on the superfund list, because the sludge from the lagoons from the tannery has been stable and not moving, not going towards the river or threatening the river for decades, and therefore, were you on the superfund list, there are so many other projects ahead of you, you'll never get, you'll never get money. The way to get money is to do this public-private partnership thing. So, over time, many steps, many negotiations, but the EPA came in with independent environmental experts and said that what we're willing to pay for is a consolidation of the waste, an encapsulation of it, meaning a wall kind of around it and an impermeable cap above it, all located in one place. And then, on the rest of the site, there would need to be a private development. So, this company, Blaylock, along with a local person, Bernie Plant, who was working with the EPA, said that they will do, you know, they will build apartments and some condos there, they will contribute $3.8 million towards the cleanup, they will, they will contribute some money to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, they will, twenty percent of the apartments will be affordable, but the, and most importantly, the EPA is telling us that if the costs go over the estimate, they will cover it. So, it seems that they have an environmentally sound approach. We did have our own Sanborn Head as a firm that the city uses, they evaluated, they think, think it'll work. So, the EPA did have an, you know, has designed this approach, they say they've used it elsewhere, and you do not need to wait the ten years, you, you know, this waste will all be in one place, it will be covered and surrounded, and the development will occur on the, the other portions of this forty acres. The access would be off the Broad Street Parkway, they would pay for the, the developers would pay for the light, you know, traffic light. And at the north end of the, the south end of the parcel, the city would get ten acres of open space, you know, removed from where the pollution was, across from Nine Falls Park, and at least, there could be a walking bridge over to the park. And that's sort of where we are. Matt is also involved with that. You, you...
No, Mayor, I think you've covered it fairly well. I would just say that...
Matt, he was very involved in all these negotiations.
I think the mayor covered it well, but to your point about the contamination and how that's being dealt with, certainly, the plan is to encapsulate the waste on-site and put it in an area that will be contained, there'll be a recreational area that can be used above that, but all of the waste will be contained and dealt with in a way that's appropriate to EPA, and of course, the state, which is complicating when it comes to redevelopment. But, the plan that's been developed allows for some development to occur on the site, to allow for the private party to come in, and also accomplishes this containment that we've been really after, and is one of the critical pieces to unlocking the site. Their proposal that's in front of the city right now is, is unique in the sense that it involves a variety of different funding sources, but it also has a variety of public benefits as well. It almost sounds too good to be true, but there really are some tremendous benefits, including the pedestrian bridge that the mayor referred to, a public boat launch that's contemplated with the project right now, and just this general connection between the tannery property and Myles Falls Park, which I think is a huge asset. So, it's many, many years in the making, but it's, it's wonderful that we'll have this opportunity to actually correct the remediation and accomplish the remediation, and also to get some much-needed housing on the property as well. So, we're feeling very positive at this point in time about it.
What's your time frame work of this?
That's a great question. So, legislation is actually in process with the Board of Aldermen right now. There are many pieces of legislation associated with this, because it is a, has many layers to it, based on the fact that there are several funding sources and many elements to the project. This is a ten-year build-out, though. This is not a two-year project, so the remediation will take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months. The development process, including, you know, stabilizing, excavating the site to actually build there, will take another year, and then building the apartments will take, you know, a year to two years beyond that, and then building out the condo units that will be sort of in a multifamily building, will take years beyond that. So, this is, this is not a two-year process, the remediation will be more quick, but the build-out of the site will be many, many years over time. Can I answer your question?
Now, the neighborhood of Little Florida, Intervale Street, there would be no connection into the neighborhood, and the, the neighborhood has said they really like the idea. I mean, they've been waiting since 1984 to see some kind of improvement here, this, this stuff has been in the ground since the tannery closed in 1984, and, you know, just abandoned, fenced off, so, you know, I think for the neighborhood, it's a good thing.
I came over because I saw this thing first, I'm sorry.
A brief, Jim, thank you, thank, thank you for the, thank you for the opportunity tonight. It's good to be here at, here in the room and here in the ward. So, just a brief detail, and maybe this is more, more for Matt, on the two projects, the, the development at the tannery project, including the cleanup, detail on the cleanup is, so there's gonna be excavation of the sludge and then put into what it sounds like a tub that's going to be subterranean and then capped. Is that, and I, I know we had a meeting on this last month, so is that, is that in detail? Is, is that the scope of, on a really high level of how that's gonna take place?
Yes, I know I should have the mic, and Catherine will tell me I have to take that mic.
Yeah, go back.
So, the, generally, that's correct. So, the, the waste will be consolidated, because it's in multiple locations on the site right now, the waste will be consolidated into one area, where there'll be a C-Cant piling system, which is essentially a sort of a concrete piling containment area around it. There'll be a cap then installed there, but then on the top, all you'll see is a, a field, essentially, with that containment area being below. Is that your question?
Right, it does, it does. Well, let me, let me add one. So, that is preferred as opposed to moving it to another location. I don't think there are hazardous waste dumping locations nearby or that are controlled, or, and the cost is maybe more prohibitive?
Well, we talked to...
And then moving, it's a hazard as well.
We talked to the EPA about that, you know, number of times. I mean, their basic position is forget it. We're, we're, you know, you want to do that, the city has to pay for it. It is far, their, their, what they say to us is it's far more expensive. From their point of view, you move it somewhere else, and they say, all you're doing is take, you know, create, you've got a polluted site, this, in this location, you then move it to somewhere else. From our point of view, the EPA, you know, moving, you know, creating, eliminating one pollution site and creating another one, you know, is not something we want to pay for.
Okay, understood. Back to the ward, thank you for the, the background. Back, back here to the crossing in Hudson and the, I guess, the traffic circle and that project that was about to commence, has Matt there as well. Are we going, is the city going to undertake a study or a probe to see what it's gonna take, or would that be up to the state to, okay?
Yes.
Either encapsulate, probably not relocate, the asbestos that's there, so the project can move forward and maybe begin to improve traffic and maybe accelerate development back in this corner here up along the river, and along with maybe some additional river use someday for the public, such as boat launches and trails and whatnot. There's a lot there in that.
You want to do it?
I'll, I'd like to comment quickly. The, the answer is yes. The city, the city, once recognizing this condition, I don't want to say pause the project, but shifted its focus to doing environmental testing to determine the full, the full extent of the contaminants or the asbestos that was in the ground in the area. So, we've shifted our focus to understanding that right now. One of the reasons we've done that is that because this is an NHDOT project primarily, there is a, a cap on the amount of funding that can be allocated to the project as is contemplated today. And so, if the disposal of those asbestos materials becomes prohibitively expensive, it's likely the city will have to secure additional funding through the DOT process or locally to actually complete the project. And so, the, the checkbook is not, the check is not blank when it comes to actually completing the work. And so, if the removal of the asbestos that we've identified or the extent is significant enough, we could be looking at a much larger and costly project. That will then turn to a policy discussion of, do we proceed with the project as it was designed and envisioned? Do we have to modify the project based on these constraints that we know to exist? Or do we move in another direction in regard to, in regard to the interchange generally? So, that, that is, we're not at that decision point just yet, because we need to find out what exactly is in the ground.
Thank you.
Hi, Beth Scary, Sobert Street. My question is, the city has been, not been complying with our right-to-know law as enshrined in our New Hampshire Constitution, and it's been costing a ton of legal fees, the city's been losing lawsuits, and I'm really concerned about the money, the amount of money that's costing us, the taxpayers, because the city won't comply with our constitution. And I want, I also wanted to thank Senator Rosenwald for sponsoring a bill to, to establish the Omsbudsman right to, to know office for the state, which I hope is gonna help, help our residents get, get the, get the information, public information that belongs to us. So, is the city gonna do better, and are we just going to keep an open checkbook writing out legal, spending legal fees and legal settlements?
All right, so, I think that reflects a bit of misunderstanding. Now, where we're really wasting money, or spending a lot of money, let's put it that way, one or two citizens have made maybe fifteen hundred right-to-know requests, at least one every day, and some of these require a few documents, some of them require a hundred, some require ten thousand. So, we have produced tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of pages to one, no, to one or two people. And what it's costing the city and our taxpayers to respond to those select individuals, we think is about a quarter of a million dollars per year in staff time for four years now, and it continues to go on. So, there were a few right-to-know requests where we said we didn't think a, a production was required. For example, the police department, which has been inundated as well, did not want to produce the tapes of criminal investigation interviews. They produced transcripts, but they didn't want to produce the tapes, and they never had, because they thought it would hurt their criminal investigations, compromise them or potentially could, because then any criminal could come up and see what, if you were interviewed, could see your interview. So, on behalf of the police department, this is one of the examples, the city said, no, we're not gonna produce that. That went to court, and we did lose. But, that's on appeal, I still think we shouldn't have to produce police department criminal tapes of interviews. There was another situation where emails had been requested, and we produced, I mean, we produced thousands and tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of emails. You know, there'll be a request, every email that this person sent for two years, I mean, that's just an example. But in one of those cases, the, for whatever reason, the city's retention system went on, you know, there was a glitch, and the regular retention mechanism could not be implemented to produce these emails. So, it required that their, that the staff go to a so-called backup tape. Trouble is, the backup tape is not in email form, it's in some kind of garbled form, I, you know, and it requires a lot of work to get to the backup tape for this select group of emails. We said, look, we think it is too much work, we don't think that that should be required. We, the court said, we did, and so that, you know, we lost that case as well. But, you know, I can just tell you that one of the biggest frustrations among city employees in City Hall is they say, we can't even do our jobs. I mean, I spent, you know, this is someone talking, I spend all my time producing documents, that's all I do here. And remember that when certain records are, you know, we produce, you know, thousands and hundreds of thousands of assessment documents, when these things get produced, there has to be redaction, someone has to go through and examine each piece of paper. Why? Because if your phone number is on there, we don't want to disclose that, so we cross it out. But that requires, in addition to the retrieval of all of this, it requires that every page be, be examined. We have two full-time employees working on this stuff, a lawyer at the cost of a hundred thousand dollars a year, and a, now, a document retrieval guy at about sixty or seventy thousand. And in addition, we've had, at times, four other people who spend, they said they spend half their time on one person. So, if we're really concerned about taxpayer money, I think the solution is to limit right-to-know requests to something reasonable, to something important, not just every document the city has ever produced. So, but, you know, we can, we're, at this point, we just produce everything, you know, but people are working on this in City Hall every day.
Maybe they'll stop, you'll stop being sued and stop losing these lawsuits. That sounds like a good answer.
There have been a couple of claims that we've lost, but of course, you never hear about all of the claims we've been successful. So, let's say, but, you know, let's say someone asks for ten thousand, let's say fifteen hundred right-to-know requests, and fourteen hundred and ninety-five are complied with, but five, there's a, there's a disagreement. Sometimes of those five, you know, we get, the decision goes our way, sometimes it doesn't. Anyway, I think that is probably enough on right-to-know requests. All right, anyone else? Talk to the Aldermen. I, you know, like, people are so frustrated in City Hall by all of this, they say, I don't want to spend, we've lost, we have lost, you know, a whole number of people who say, I don't want to spend all my time producing documents. I'm, I'm doing this all for one or two people, I don't want to do this, I'm, I'm quitting. Yes, Mayor?
I do have another question. What, what insights do you have about the transformation of Elm Street?
So, the, we've taken some public input, and of course, the Elm Street's going to be abandoned when the school department occupies the Brian McCarthy School. So, the public input so far has been to, kind of the preferred approach, is a moderate-density housing. And the, and so that kind of is the basic approach. In addition to that, Riviera University, and we think, you know, they've done a very good job in improving the university, would like to maintain a varsity hockey program, and they're, they're able to do it to some degree, working with Conway, but Conway has only one rink, and they, you know, have limited time there. And I don't think they can have home games, they don't have enough locker rooms, you know. Conway has only one rink. And so, Riviera has located Edge Sports, which is a private company who will come in and build and develop hockey rinks, and then lease time to, to a primary tenant such as Riviera. So, at least one approach for a portion of the site, the corner where the, the portables are now, one of those... are now, one of those, that, one of, that, that section of the site, there's a possibility that Edge Sports could come in, build two hockey rinks, lease them, you know, lease much of the time to Riviere, but lease the rest to other users of ice, youth hockey, adults, whoever wants to lease. And then they would, they would own and operate the rinks. They would pay the city like property taxes for the value of those rinks.
They would. It wouldn't be Riviere being tax exempt.
No, it would not be Riviere being taxed. In fact, it couldn't be because state and law wouldn't allow it. The, if a, if any, any property that is privately owned has to pay property taxes. Now, that's a possibility-
Business profit tax.
What?
Business profit tax.
And they pay business profit tax, but they also have to pay property tax. And in fact, the law says that if a nonprofit, well, they would have to pay property tax.
This gentleman's about, you have ten more minutes, mayor?
Yes. This is Carl Seidel, yes.
I came from Ward One, but of course, I've been hearing all sorts of stories. Something happened at, at North High School two, two weeks ago, and I'm hearing things about a lot of policemen had to go there and one was injured and some student was knocked unconscious. Can you fill in the information because it's-
There was a situation at North High School, but, so the question is, did something happen at North High School requiring a police response? And the, Carl's question, he's, the rumors are that somebody got knocked out, that a police department was injured, police officer was injured. The, the police officer was injured, nobody got knocked out, but there was a basketball game and there've been some previous arguments between memorial students and Nashua-North students. And unfortunately, after the game, a few students went after one of the memorial students. A police officer arrived, but he was not really injured. A police officer arrived, kind of broke the situation up. Other cars did respond, but in the end, you know, the situation was dealt with and, you know, they are investigating and, and pursuing, you know, they're invest, the police department is definitely investigating and will, you know, take the appropriate steps with anybody that they feel violated the law.
Is the Board of Education doing anything to prevent this in the future?
Can you repeat that, mayor?
Pardon?
Can you repeat his question?
Is the Board of Ed doing anything? Well, I know the school superintendent is very concerned about it, so I assume that the Board of Ed is, you know, doing what they can as well. But it, you know, it did happen, but the, but the-
I just think that's-
The rumors are exaggerated, the, the extent of it.
Well, that's one thing I was going to suggest is we have some kind of a better way of communicating these things, so we don't have things going, you know, crazy.
Good point.
And people like to hear about this and that there's no way of communicating. You're talking about the problem with all the people putting in requests for information. May I suggest maybe, I know you go around and have a, a beer with you or have coffee with you, but maybe once a month, you could just answer a lot of questions of some of the people, because it seems to be a lot of communication.
Well, I'd be glad to do that. So, now, do any other people, our members of the Board of Aldermen have, Rick?
Mayor, you have five more minutes and, um-
Well, could we go to Rick at the moment?
For those that don't know, yeah, I'm Rick Dowd, I'm Alderman of Ward Two and the chairman of the Joint Special School Building Committee. The only thing I wanted to mention tonight is we're in the process of a new project. We have three schools that still require a security vestibule. This is one of the schools. We haven't announced it beforehand because of security, but it's now sort of public knowledge since we've hired an architect and have a RFP out for a construction manager, and this is one of the schools. And, and this summer, a security vestibule will go in, the offices will be moved to the front door, and this school will be as secure as-
And this school is Dr., you mean Dr. Chris?
Dr. Chris.
Yes. Now, Lori, Cindy, any, anything you want to mention?
Budget. It's a budget year.
Yes.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for taking my question. About that fight where Alderman Como was on TV talking about it, the superintendent of Manchester released a statement saying that they would not tolerate the violence to the students or by the students, but I have not seen that from the Nashua counterpart of that Manchester superintendent. Did they do the same thing?
Well, I've talked with the police department about it, so I don't know what, you know, Superintendent Andrade has done, but I know he's, I mean, said publicly, but he is definitely acting to prevent this kind of thing in the future. I mean, there's no question about that. And so, was the police department-
So, so follow-up, there was no statement released?
What?
There was no statement released saying that they would not tolerate this, like the Manchester superintendent did to Channel Nine?
Well, maybe he should have issued that statement, but I, but his attitude is that it will not be tolerated.
Thank you.
Yes, Peter?
I have one more status question coming to think of it.
Yes.
Is it downtown, along the river, we're taking down the trees and we're going to put up a dock and all of that? I was wondering how that's going to be, and it's really sec, really, last question I have is, what are we going to do with all that money we're going to save for not plowing the streets this year?
Give it back to the tax.
By the chairman of budgets?
Yeah, it isn't, it isn't over yet, yes, we'll see.
The question was the status of the river project. So, we have an extensive riverfront improvement plan funded by so-called TIF, Tax Increment Financing District. You can see the, you know, the, the master plan, the plan online. It includes a lot of improvements, riverwalks, lighting, renewed park, Water Street would, would have some changes. But it all had to be designed and permitted, meaning because it's on the riverfront and there are suspended walkways, you know, as you see at Peddlers and the other four corners of Main Street, the Main Street Bridge. Because it involved the riverfront, it needs to be permitted, you know, DES and environmental agencies. You know, all of that, we had, our engineering firm, this has taken longer than we wanted. So, we're hoping, we believe, I, you know, they're telling me, we can embark on the project this year, you know, so hopefully that comes to pass, but there have been delays in the past, so, you know. But eventually, it will happen. Lori, you got anything?
I just want to say, it's always nice to be back here in Ward Seven where I was the alderman for eight years, and it's nice to see a few familiar faces here. Just know that the mayor is working very hard, and I know you know he is, and the aldermen have been working hard alongside him approving, you know, projects that we believe are in the best interest of everyone. So, just want to thank you for coming out here, and it's always nice to see Ward Seven people.
Seven o'clock, mayor.
All right, why don't we do one more question? If anyone-
Behind you, behind you.
Yes, Catherine?
I just want to thank all the public employees, the City Hall employees, the teachers, everybody. This is a hard time right now economically, and those people that work for the public are our heroes.
Mine's, mine's more of a, kind of like a question. I'm, I'm just wondering with the talk that we've had on housing, I'm, I'm wondering, one, do we have any projects other than Nashua Housing Authority that would address any individuals with maybe a fifty percent AMI and under?
Yes.
Because I know we have a lot that address the eighty percent, but that's a lot of out of the reach.
So, the question has to do with affordable housing, and this AMI, what that means is that's area median income. For a family of four, that is around a hundred thousand dollars. So, a lot of these projects, you know, a lot of subsidized projects or affordable housing projects, they'll be cat, they'll be aimed at people who make eighty percent of area median income. Family of four, around eighty thousand dollars. The fifty percent of AMI, which is what you've asked about, would be about fifty thousand dollars for a family of four. But just as context, you know, we have a big housing crisis. Rents and along with home values have gone through the roof. We have less than a one percent vacancy rate, demand is high, we need more housing of all So, the answer on fifty percent of AMI and below, yes, the Housing Authority, you know, the Housing Authority project on Central Street, Monahan Manor, two hundred and ten units, will have a variety of affordabilities, some eighty, some fifty, some lower.
Yeah, I think they only have one.
Another one is, we are working with Neighbor Works and have, I think, reached an agreement as to how to proceed on a development, a twenty, a forty-six unit project in that blighted parking lot that's right across from CBS on Main Street, you know, next to, just, just south of, one building south of East Hollis, or of Hollis Street. It's had a, it's had a fence around it for quite a while. So, in there, Neighbor Works will build forty-six units, all, I think, below eighty percent. I think it's, I think it's all a lower level of affordability. But we know we need to help people who are at fifty percent, eighty percent, and people who, you know, are more than a hundred. I mean, even a fa, you know, a young family that's coming in and they make a hundred percent of AMI for, you know, even, even for that family, housing is expensive and people have trouble finding, buying, renting, you know, it's definitely something that the Board of Aldermen has worked on. Any new development needs to have a portion of affordable housing incorporated within it. And we have established an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to help stimulate this. We, we received ARPA money. This is federal American Rescue Plan money. The vast majority of it was allocated into an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to try to stimulate the development of more affordable housing. So, we're trying to aggressively help make the community one that people of all income levels can, you know, live comfortably and live meaningful lives. Yes, ma'am?
If we continue the, excuse me, the people welcoming-
If we continue to be a welcoming community, how can we solve the housing problem and the drug problem?
Well, of course, you know, people come, welcoming means, look, I mean, we don't condemn people because of who they are.
But if they're coming from the border-
Yeah.
Overnight, which they are, how can we solve a, a problem that we already have? It's just-
Well, we can't keep people out, I mean, you know, so, but I'm not aware that people have come from the border to Nashua.
Can you just make a quick comment?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm going to just fall on my tuchus. I, it seems that you have a fear that people are coming from out of the state or even out of our country to come and get the housing, but in actuality, in the city of Nashua alone, we do have available housing, but unfortunately, we have a large portion of apartments that are actually empty, that nobody goes in because they have taken those apartments, the people that own them, and have designated them as an Airbnb. So, if someone doesn't come for that one night and, and make a reservation to come visit our nice town of Nashua, that apartment sits empty. And when apartments sit empty, they take away apartments from families that are coming in and wanting to settle and make a home here. So, that takes away from that.
All right, well, we do have to wrap up. There aren't many Airbnbs in Nashua. I mean, the, Matt is saying, you know, but we need, we need housing-
No-in-law apartments.
Across, across the board. And that's what we're working on. So, I want to thank you all for being here and for coming. Thank you for your input. We'll try to, you know, come back soon and if you want to have- All right, anyway, thank you very much. Cindy?